And we have two things here that you need to know about. The Historical Commission has referred this issue to the Cape Cod Commission. They will hear it on August 7th. Depending upon their vote, you know that can go for a lengthy delay while they deliberate. We should know by the meeting, by our meeting of the 12th. So it makes sense tonight that we vote an extension that has been requested. Jeffrey Nickerson has written us a letter. It's dated July 14th. Please accept this letter as confirmation that Wald Management Corp. consents of an extension of time for the Planning Board's review of the above referenced matter until August 27, 2014. Thank you for your time and consideration. So, we need to have a motion to accept the applicant's request for an extension of time until August 27th. I would need a motion for that, Eamon.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Just a question. Are we gonna, this is a discussion hearing right now anyways, right? On this issue?
Yeah.
Are we gonna have any more discussions or just hold it off to the next time?
We would hold it until potentially August 12th, until the Cape Cod Commission acts on it.
Okay.
If they decline to act on it, we will most certainly hear it on the 12th. If they act on it, then, as you know, we've had other issues that the Commission has acted on, and we don't have any jurisdiction until the Commission acts.
I'm just asking a specific question. When we address it, is it gonna be hearing or discussion?
It's a discussion. It's a site plan review.
Have you already had the hearing?
It's a plan review, so it's just a discussion.
Okay.
It's just, yeah. Whenever we have that, a site plan review, we don't close it.
Okay, I understand. I did have a couple of questions. I guess I can wait till that time.
Yeah, because that makes more sense.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we accept the extension until August 27th, as requested by the applicant. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay. Now, I need a motion to go back to our regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, now we go to public hearing. The applicant, Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, special permit modification to update the equipment list, expand hours of operation, and allow outside parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use of the Contractor's Yard located at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway East Falmouth. And you have, yes, Brian?
You just may want to wait 35, 36 seconds for Mr. Brown to arrive and just pull it to the parking lot.
That would be appreciated.
Okay. I didn't know whether he was coming or not. And let's take those seconds to, do you all have a copy of the letter in your folder? You might wanna take a quick, yeah. Oh, you go ahead, Paul, and give the notice.
Now you can proceed.
The public hearing notice was published on July 4th, 2014, July 11, 2014, and July 18, 2014. Twelve notices were sent by satisfied mail on July 4th. Nine were received as, as signed.
Thank you. And you have in your folders the attorney's letter and the information that they are presenting to us. But right now, we are going to hear from the attorney representing the client, his client, with this issue.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Oppenheim. I represent petitioner, Nathan Ellis Highway LLC. The manager of the limited liability company is Mr. Carl Cabosa, who's sitting in the front row. And next to him is my law partner, Jeff Nickerson. We also have the LLC's financial, the CFO of the company here, sitting at the back, Mr. Greg Crowley. And we appreciate the opportunity to make another presentation to the board on this issue. I just wanna confirm, we have seven people sitting, so we need a super majority of five. Is that correct? Okay, that is correct. I'd like to just quickly go over the site plan, because it's been about two months, a little over two months since we discussed this in the initial meeting. As I think all of you know, this property has its frontage on Nathan Ellis Highway, Route 151, which is one of the major arteries, traffic arteries in our community, moving traffic from east to west. And this site was developed in the 1990s under a special permit from this board. The permit has evolved over several modifications. And now onsite is a building, which is the garage building, this metal building on the end here. It, at one point, had a fabrication company located in the northern portion of the building, Cape Cod Fabrication, but they have not been at the site for some years. Also on the site is a cell tower, which was permitted by our Zoning Board of Appeals. It's roughly in here, this circle, is the drop zone. There is an office building located at the entrance with parking, and there's also parking along the back of a planted berm, which runs the entire length of the property, which is also something which I'm sure the Planning Board is familiar with. In this area, my client stores materials, and I will show you a photograph, which shows some of the piles of materials on the site. He has a screening plant, which is this item here on the site. And he backs up to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts land, and over here is a railroad right away into the base. And those are the major features of the site. I certainly would be happy to discuss any questions you might have after my presentation. Now, from a procedural point of view, on behalf of the petitioner, on April 4th, we submitted an application to amend his special permit. And we did that under 24038K, 240109E. 24038K is the Contractor's Yard provision. 240109E is the parking in the front yard setback, and 24038G4 is parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use. So we did that out of the gate in April. After the submission of that application, after meeting with the planning staff, it was suggested that that part of our application, which related to the accessory vehicles, would not be properly before this board. And so we threw that aspect from our application, and we submitted that to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals declined to accept that request, and it went directly to Town Council for his review. And at the time we filed with the ZBA, you know, there was obviously a disagreement as to before what board this issue should be placed. Now, during the hearings that we previously had before the board, that issue was pending. It was open. So we didn't discuss certain things with you that we are going to be able to discuss this evening. So I wanna make it clear, our decision to discuss them this evening, or not to discuss them earlier, was not our choosing. But we're very happy that Town Council feels that this board is the appropriate board to discuss any modifications to our special permit. Now, we submitted to the board, or the board had already directly, a copy of Town Council's opinion on this. It's in your file. You know, it's rather clear that the board has this properly before them. On the copy that I submitted to the board, I highlighted two sections to make it easier for the board to take a look at it. So it's, we're very pleased that we now have the opportunity to discuss the accessory use of the Contractor's Yard for parked wheeled vehicles associated with our client's rubbish hauling business. And when I say "our client," one of our tenants is Cabosa Disposal, Inc. The owner of the real estate is Nathan Ellis Highway LLC. Another one of the tenants at the property is Cabosa Excavation Company, Inc., which was the initial company when this site was developed, did site work, and installed septic systems, and built roads, and parking lots, and all of the things that you would associate with a company that does site work. In the course of doing its site work, it learned that the people that they were working for at these sites had a need for the disposal of construction and demolition debris. And it was from that that we came to the board in 2002 and asked for and received a special permit that allowed us to have dumpsters on the site and trucks to move dumpsters to and from construction sites. This evening, we are asking for a modification, and I'd like to take you through the modification so there's no confusion as to what we're requesting. And in my submittal to the board, I've highlighted in an exhibit the changes since April, when I first submitted my petition. And I also included a track change of the same document showing the changes from 2002. Now, why did I do that? I did that so there would be no confusion as to the changes and what we're asking. And again, I'd like to highlight, most of the changes in the equipment list from April to this evening are due to the fact that now we're able to discuss with you these accessory vehicles, this accessory use, hence the vehicles. Before I get to the vehicles, let's talk about the hours of operation. So, right now, the board has allowed us to operate between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. with the allowance for emergency operations primarily around snow removal in the winters. That's an established decision of this board. So what are we asking for? We're asking for unlimited hours of operation with restrictions. And I think it's important to understand the restrictions, because I know it was a concern of the board, they expressed their concern earlier, and I will try as best I can to address it. So, we're asking that between the hours of 8:00 in the evening and 6:00 in the morning, we are allowed to repair vehicles inside our garage, and we are allowed to come and go from the site. We will not be doing any loading, we will not be doing any screening, any of the activities that typically are associated with noise at the site. So why do we make this request? Well, we want to be in compliance with the special permit issued by this board. It is, our use of the site presently is consistent with my request. So as counsel to the petitioner, I want, as best as I can for my client, a decision from this board that is consistent with his use. The site is on Route 151, okay? Keep in mind where we are. We have truck traffic on that road, which is not controlled by this board, not controlled by anyone. It's interstate commerce, some of it. And we are asking to be able to depart from our site onto this thoroughfare, and to be, and to do it under the special permit that this board will hopefully amend. Now, consistent with this request, we have gone to the Board of Health, and we provided you with information in your file last month, and we requested from the Board of Health a permit to collect rubbish in the town of Falmouth between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Okay, there's a bylaw that says rubbish collection starts at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. But there's a provision of our bylaw that allows an exemption. And we applied under that exemption, we had a hearing, and the Board of Health has issued us a permit. Now, why do I tell you that? Not to pressure you in any way, but to tell you that the board that has jurisdiction over this decision has made a favorable decision about our operation. I'm here tonight to ask you to allow my client to park the vehicles associated with that activity on his site. I'm also here to tell you that he has been doing that for some number of years, and without complaint, or with few complaints. And you can check the letters in the file, in particular, from our police chief. You can also see the letters in the file of support from, I found the Village Association, from our Chamber of Commerce, and from the Woods Hole Business Community. So why do they support us in this effort? Well, because the trucks that we use to remove rubbish from our business locations in our community would be best to be on our streets, when our streets are not busy and crowded, especially during the summer months. Some of the dumpsters that are being removed, and not removed, but dumped into the vehicles, are in locations which are sometimes challenging. And the less traffic, the less pedestrians that are in the area, the safer it is for our public. And the easier it is, from a Board of Health point of view, to remove rubbish from our community, which is a, ultimately, a public health issue. I remember, and I hope I'm not dating myself, you know, metropolitan strikes in New York City where the sanitation workers decided, you know, they weren't gonna pick up the garbage. And it didn't take long for there to be some serious problems in New York City after So, why do we need to have the right to come and go from our site in hours that are, you know, nighttime hours? Well, and I've given you several reasons, but I would like to go over them. My client owns several dump trucks, and those dump trucks are used for various activities, but as an example only. They might be called to work on Route 495, which they were repaving sections of 495, and the state contract says that the work on that section of the highway is gonna be done between 11:00 in the evening and 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. So it's not to have too great an adverse impact on the traffic that moves down 495. So Mr. Cabosa sends trucks there under contract to do the work necessary to move material to and from those sites. That's just one example. Another example is handling a rather involved contract to remove demolition from the Boston City Hospital, which was being renovated, and I believe that contract was a sort of 24/7 type of a contract, that, you know, the general contractor was supposed to go in, do his work, and keep doing his work, and Mr. Cabosa's job was to keep the refuse that was coming from the old buildings leaving the site. Now, Mr. Cabosa does get called out by our community, and you should be aware of that, on an emergent basis, to knock over buildings that are hazardous, that have been, you know, the fire department has put out the fire, but the building needs to be demolished right away. He's been asked by our police department to remove dumpsters from crime scenes and to transport them to secure locations, and he does this. He gets out of bed, it's, he doesn't call one of his own guys, he gets out of bed, and he goes and tries to help our community in those sorts of situations. He has also held, not currently, but in the past, contracts with CMAAS. CMAAS is a trash-to-energy company, and Mr. Cabosa had contracts to move trash from outside of Boston to CMAAS to be burned, and then to take the fly ash, which is the byproduct of burning trash, to landfills. And again, this is the type of performance contract where, you know, it's 365 days a year, pretty much 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, it's not your average excavation company, I guess is what I would wanna press upon you. I'd like to now turn your attention to the vehicle list, which I hope you have in front of you. And if you look at the, I did two lists again, one of them is bolded, and the other one has track changes. So we've already talked about, under Paragraph 1, the normal business hours, unlimited with restrictions. But if you go down to Section B, you'll see bold the vehicles that we have added or subtracted from this list since we gave it to you in April. If you would like, you can take the track change list, and you can put it to your right, and you can put the bold list to your left, and you will see, hopefully clearly, every change we made. For example only, under 2B1, two 10-wheel tractors. If you look at the track change draft, it was originally four, okay? So we lost two in that category. And we deleted our septic pump truck, because we no longer own one. But we have added Roman numeral B, 6, 7, 8, and 9. And three of those four categories were for the exact reason of not being able to discuss this accessory use up until this evening. The other addition is under C, 8, 100-yard walking floor materials trailer. And on the back, or on the second page, we've added inventory of parts under supplies. It's a little hard to list all the things that our client uses, so we, you know, are putting categories. And actually, I'm pretty sure that your decision in 2002 included Paragraph 3C, which was the byproduct of site excavation work, but not, but not limited to asphalt, stone, and concrete to be recycled to a road-based product. They grind that stuff up, and they recycle it for road base. Now, I'd like to turn to the bylaw for a moment, and, but before I do, I'd like to share with you some photos, because I know the board didn't have the opportunity to go to the site because of the open meeting law, and that was discussed very early on. So I'd like to give the chairwoman a few photos, which I hope will be helpful to the If I could just explain the photos quickly. There's one showing a hoop building, which the board asked about. And this is one of two structures on the property. Our building commissioner has said that he would discuss with the petitioner permitting these structures if it was acceptable to the Planning Board. So if the Planning Board finds it acceptable, I think it's certainly reasonable to condition your approval on my client getting the proper permits for these structures. Now, we discussed these briefly at an earlier hearing. These structures are used primarily during the winter months to shelter vehicles during inclement weather, so that the men and women who work for my client are not having to clean off their vehicles when they go out on snow emergencies, provides a little protection from the elements. You will see in the foreground some of the dumpsters that are used for construction and demolition. They say Waste Express on some of them, some of them say Cabosa. Waste Express was a company that my client purchased, they were, they did business out of Sandwich, I believe. Now, the rest of the photos are primarily showing you the vehicles used in the rubbish business. And we've lined them up so we, you could see them, and also so you would have a sense of how much room they took up on the site. And we have them on the list. I believe there's seven, front-loading and two rear-loading rubbish trucks. Now, in this photo, I included this photo so that you would see the far end of the site, which is where the materials are stored, which is this end of the site. The trucks are parked right in this area here. And you can see behind the trucks, the cell tower. Now, this photo shows the four trucks owned by my client that are used to deliver and remove the dumpsters. Those trucks are specially designed to do that. So I'd ask that those be included in the record. So I'd ask that those be included in the record. Now, I'd like to turn my attention to our bylaw. So, there has been an evolution at the site. We started in excavation. We moved into CND as a result of excavation. From excavation, we saw a need for rubbish removal here in the upper Cape, and we have, we are providing that service in our community. The use of commercial rubbish removal is customarily incidental to the construction and demolition business, which is our dumpster business. And that's the standard under accessory use in our bylaw. Accessory use is defined as a use of land or building on the same lot with, and customarily incidental, but secondary to, a permitted use, except that if more than 30% of the floor area or 50% of the lot area is occupied by such use, it shall no longer be considered accessory. The photo in front of you is evidence of the small area on this 8.65 acre parcel, or lot, that is taken up by these vehicles that include our accessory use. Under 24038G4B, the planning board, per Mr. Duffy's opinion, has the authority to grant a special permit that allows the accessory use of the parking of these trucks related to the trash business. So you have the authority, whether you want to grant it or not, is obviously something that we hope you do, but it's in your province. So, other issues that you raised earlier, the temporary buildings, I think we've touched on that. Someone raised the issue of a vernal pool. Perhaps it was someone in the audience who attended, maybe it was someone from the board who was concerned. There is a letter in your 2002 file from an environmental engineer at Green Seal Environmental stating emphatically, "There are no vernal pools on this site." So you do not have to worry about that. There is an area on this site which is a drainage swell, okay? Don't confuse that with a vernal pool, completely different animal. You were concerned, or seemed concerned, about parking in the setback, okay? It was discussion about parking in this area. Is it paved, is it not paved, you know, is it stone? What is it? Why is it? Again, you addressed this historically in 2002. You allowed it. And I believe at the time, the board allowed it because of the very large berm that dominates the front of this property. You can't see the vehicles parked behind the berm. They're there, but they're not visible to our community. You raised an issue about the easement. There's a utility easement here, and you were wondering, what are we doing in the utility easement? Well, understand this, that we own the fee interest under that utility easement. So what we do in the utility easement is between us and the person who has the benefit of the easement. And I can assure you that N-Star is enjoying access through our property, okay? What do I mean by that? They may have the rights in their easement, but their easement does not take them through our property. It takes them down to Route 151. So we have an arrangement, I guess it's a gentleman's arrangement. They can come and go, and they're heavy trucks, get in the easement, do what they need to do on the lines, and if we, if they have a problem getting access, which they haven't, who do you think they're going to talk to? They'll talk to Mr. Cabosa, okay? Otherwise, they're going to have to find access somewhere else along this easement, and you know that this easement runs north through the military reservation, along Route 28, and there really is no easy access north of this site. Has not been an issue. I would urge you not to make it an issue. I really don't think it's within your jurisdiction to make it an issue, but that's just one person's opinion. I think I've covered the list of things that I believe you were concerned about. Now, you may have obviously new concerns or additional concerns, and I hope that we have an opportunity to discuss them. We are very interested in resolving any actual or potential issues so that we can get a favorable decision. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we will have information-seeking questions from the board. I will remind you that this is not the time for our discussion, but if you have any questions over the new materials that have been submitted, now is the time to ask them. And then after we are satisfied, then I will go to members of the public. Does anybody have questions? Paul.
Mr. Duff, I'd like to make one general comment, a very comprehensive review, but you used the term "evolved" early on, and then you gratuitously mentioned "evolution." What that means is your client exceeded the permit during that period of evolution over a period of time. That's my impression, just a general comment.
Yep. My client, I understand, Mr. Dryer, your comment, and it's, I guess my response would be, is that I believe that my client didn't appreciate that the, this evolution was something that had to be permitted by this board. He now does, but during the course of it, and it wasn't, you know, it was, it wasn't maybe as dramatic as I was able to present to you in, you know, a few sentences. I mean, it happened over time, and that's why I used the word "evolution." It wasn't, you know, an overnight type of event.
Other questions? Yes, Doug.
So, when you say that the dumpster is accessory to the construction, and it's 30% or less of the total space, have you actually calculated that? When they see the empty dumpster storage in two locations, and the seven trucks of one kind and six of another, and then four of the third kind, it's probably getting close to that, isn't it?
Well, first of all, it's 50% of the land, Mr. Brown. It's 30% of the floor area of the structures, okay? So we would have to be using something in excess of four acres on this site, you know, over half, for the use.
Okay.
That's why I showed you the photographs. The vehicles are using a fraction of that.
I see.
But we've permitted for half of it already. The roll-off stuff, we're already permitted.
Right, we have the 2002 permit.
The 2002 thing, right.
And half the roll-off trucks are permitted already, so that area wouldn't be included in the accessory.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I just have a question about the parking area and the setback? In the 2002 plan, which I believe is the plan you have there, that shows proposed crushed stone, is that stone?
I'm going to ask my client. I believe most of the setback.
No, this, this is, this is paved here.
Okay.
This is not paved.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, yeah, the paved spot here, it's not paved. It's a question of, it's paved now at the office, and paved at the garage.
We can correct that on the plan.
The new plan, I think, shows it as, without the, what the O2 was, and I was trying to find out if that was paved versus stone, so that's what that is. That answers my question, thank you.
You've shown us a picture of the hoop building.
Yes.
Without the cover.
Yes.
Is that generally removed during the summer months?
Yes, I think it's removed generally in the non-winter months.
Okay.
It's never been on.
It's never been on?
We erected it at the beginning of this winter, used it, and never finished it. So the cover's never actually been, the hoop building's never been completed.
And what is used for the cover?
It's a vinyl.
Vinyl.
It's a temporary structure, and I think when Jeff talked about Aladio Gore.
Why don't you come up?
Yeah, because I'm not sure whether the microphone is picking you up. You've got a good voice for carrying, but.
My name's Cal Cabosa. When I spoke to Mr. Gore about the permit to permit the structure, Jeff had said that we were asking for your approval and then his permit. That's really not what's going to happen. The way the hoop building is, is for us to put up a temporary building, you get a 30-day permit, and then you go back in 30 days, then you go back in 30 days. What I said to Mr. Gore was, it would be a lot easier if I got appro, he said to me, he suggested we get approved for the building here, temporary structure, it's not going to stay up forever, probably be up for a year or two, and once I was approved for it, he'd come out, look at it, it's fine, and then I don't have to keep going in for a permit for a temporary building. It's approved on the site, and it's done. That could be something that Brian and Aladio can figure out exactly how that permit's going to work.
Okay, then I have heard a question of you, because you said it'd probably be up for a year or two. Why only a year or two, if you plan to keep on cleaning roads and so on?
Well, you know, the, ideally, as my, as my business grows, I think the next step for our company will be to be located somewhere else, you know, and it may be southeastern mass somewhere where we can have a transfer station, or a recycling station, or something like that. Obviously, at this facility, we can't do that. So, you know, this, this may be two-year or five-year plan, and we may not be in the rubbish business in five years. You know, we've been approached in the past to be bought by a, by a company, and I'm sure that'll happen again. So, you know, two-year plan for me would be about the length of what I'd be willing to commit to, and after that, let's see what happens, you know? Our business obviously has grown, there's a need in our community, and as the recycling bylaws change, those needs are going to change. Right now, a lot of recyclings, composting, and stuff like that is going to change, so, you know, down the road, we may need the land and not the building.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, then I will move to the public for any kinds of questions or comments. And remember, if you have questions or comments, please come up to the podium and identify yourselves, so that the viewing audience and our recording secretary can take that down. Are there any questions from the public? Comments? Okay, hearing none, is the, are seeing no hands raised. Is the board satisfied with what they've heard tonight, so that you'd be willing to close this hearing and take it under advisement?
I think so.
May I have a question?
Okay. Then I hereby close the hearing, and I need a motion to take it under advisement.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we take this under advisement.
Second.
And move to second, and that the board take this issue under advisement. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain. Thank you. Can we move on now to discussion? Oh, Anne, you're probably here for walled management, since we've accepted their extension of time, because the Cape Cod Commission has a hearing on the 7th of August. So we're not taking anything, any further action on that, and I thought I better tell you that, okay? I don't think anybody else is here for that, but if so, please be advised. So, we move on now to discussion. The applicant is, I'm going to say PAL, it could be P-A-L, I'm not sure how they refer to themselves, Realty Trust. Site plan reviewed to construct a 3,250 square foot office building on .39 acres with associated parking, drainage, and landscape.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Bob Comnet, Falmouth attorney. I represent PAL Realty Trust, and owner of the property at 10 County Road. Two of the beneficiaries of the trusts are here, Kristen Heisler and Lisa Kenny. They are associated with Real Estate Associates, North Falmouth, actually, a Pan Falmouth and Cape Cod Real Estate Company, that has operated their offices on the other side of the corner at County Road and 28A in North Falmouth for decades. And they have the opportunity to build their own office, as they want to do on County Road, between the beginning of the bike path, where the railroad crosses County Road, and the intersection at 151 and 28A. So they propose to build a two-story office building, 3,250 square feet in size. It's a relatively small building, that's the size that would be allowed, office building in the general residence district in Falmouth Center. And it requires 13 parking spaces. It is a byright use in the Business 3 zoning district. Town meeting rezoned this property from residential to Business 3 about two years ago, and, as I said, the plan meets the requirements of the bylaw. Now, we have submitted some reduced copies of a landscape plan, and today, some full-size copy of the landscape plan that I have. The landscape plan does show a bike rack, which makes particular sense in this location next to the bike path, so maybe it will actually get some use. The engineer for the project is Mike McGrath, and he's here to can talk about drainage and other issues related to the, to the plan. I have looked at the staff report, there are only two issues mentioned. One is, at the time it was prepared, the absence of the landscape plan, and we've submitted that. And the other is, any traffic mitigation? We have put the bike rack on the plan, and this is, you know, a general office building. The number of trips per day under the ITE rates for a building of this size is really quite small, even in the peak hour, the total number of trips per ITE would be about five, 1.5 trips roughly per thousand square feet of the building. Each trip in and out is a trip, so the actual amount of traffic from this site is going to be quite small. There is an existing house in the approximate location of the building, and a curb cut today in the approximate location, so that already exists. Mike, do you want to add?
My name is Mike McGrath, I'm a registered engineer and professional landscaper, and I'd like to give Brian a copy. This is the, the railroad is on the center line, and then the bike path is over a little bit, and... And the site is a small lot up against the railroad bike path and County Road. Across the street, there's a switching station for Comallectric. And this is a high-voltage wire that comes to this pole. So we, the location of the driveways is far to the east as possible without disturbing that pole. So, and the parking lot is in the back with the building oriented towards the front. There's a bike rack in this location. And the other change on the plan is they put a proposed bulkhead in here. So the drainage is designed so everything drains to this catch basin, and then there's a subsurface leachant structure, the septic systems in the back. There's roof, dry wells for roof runoff going to be served by town water. So I'm here to answer any engineering questions that you might have concerning the design.
Does the board have any questions in regard to the plan?
Right, so I understand there has been a landscaping plan submitted.
Yes.
And traffic mitigation report. Is that just in the form of a letter, or was that just the fact that you added the bike rack?
Bob Amant spoke about the traffic impacts, and there's no question we've added the bike rack that should reduce the amount of trips.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
I see that the drainage from the roof is all captured into dry wells. I don't see any other concern.
Do not see members of the public here, except for the proponents of this. As you know, this is a site plan review, so we do not close the hearing. It's pretty early, so I suppose we could discuss, if the board so chooses, what our brothers are tonight.
Well, it looks like a similar plan that was approved at town meeting, and I think it looks fine.
Does anybody have any comments on it?
I don't see a whole lot to discuss.
I don't either, I think it's great.
Yeah, curb cut looks good.
One of the things that they talked about, traffic mitigation and stuff, as being a real estate person too, that this type of business is not going to generate that much at all, so that's not even a concern, what I see.
Hopefully, it's a little.
By the bike path.
And I think myself, with the bike path so close to this, that's a wonderful way of mitigating anything too, having the bike racks there. They would most likely be used.
I like the fact that the pot isn't over here. I think it's a nice plan.
Ralph?
Yeah, it's apparent that our staff thinks it's a good plan because there are only two open items which have already been addressed.
It's conforming in all areas, correct?
Setbacks, setbacks?
No, sometimes, folks, there's just not much to talk about.
Okay. If there is no more discussion, then I'd like to have a motion to endorse the plan.
I move that we endorse the plan.
Second.
And move to second that we endorse the plan as it has been presented to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Now that was really painless.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we move on to site visit protocol. Quorum slash open meeting timing, minutes, property owner permission. And Brian, who provides that, please?
Sure. So you have a draft of an outline I proposed for the board so you can have some sort of procedure, because in the past, it's been very difficult to get these site visits ordered. I think we put it in such a fashion that it makes a lot of sense how to proceed. One of the things I would like to go over with the board tonight is this protocol. My sense is, the best way to proceed would be, and always remember, that you operate as a board, first and foremost. And we should let the applicant get in the batter's box and present those plans to you, whether it be a special permit, or whether it be a subdivision plan, or whether it be a site plan review, such as you saw tonight. And if the board believes that in its information gathering, in its hearings, and in its deliberations, deliberations, that a view of the site is something that would be beneficial because the plans are either very complex, or the site has characteristics which necessitate a view, then we'll put that together for you. And there are certain things that have to happen. The board has to decide it's necessary. The applicant has to say yes. The applicant has to give you permission to enter onto the site. Once special permit, they chose to give you photographs. They declined permission to enter. So once these things can occur, then we can coordinate that for you as a board. We can meet at the town hall, we can go over the plans with you as a board, so we have efficient use of all our time. You will need to review the file with us, there might be other information that might be in there that's important. We can meet at town hall, we would need a quorum to open the meeting, and then we'll go out to view the site. Remember, it's very important to also remember that it's really up to the applicant to make sure they represent and describe and explain their plans to you. I either am not competent, or it's really not my purview to do their work. I don't mind assisting you and helping you, it's all great, but ultimately, remember, board, it's up to the applicant to describe the drawings so you understand them. So we can have this meeting at town hall, we can adjourn and go to the site, take a look around, and remember, it's a view. It's really more important to get to know the environs in the area. Oh, they didn't show us the boat storage, oh, there's a daycare center there. That's the most important thing about a view. We have to also remember, it's not an opportunity to really discuss it. And it's not an opportunity to meet with the property owner, to be lobbied, or within a butter to be lobbied. It'll be an open meeting. But my sense is the board should just go, here is the site, here's what it looks like, and if it helps you in your deliberations and make your decisions, I'm all for it. So I think that's the protocol I would put in front of the board tonight. I think it's the way to go, to act as a board, and we'll help you put it together.
Are these same protocols for all boards in town? Like for both, does zoning have the same restraints? And does conservation follow the same rules?
Yeah, you don't have a right of entry. You have to notify the applicant, you have to post the meeting.
Do the other boards have the same constraints, is my question?
Yeah, you still have to go as a board, you have to follow the open meeting laws, a memo from Attorney Duffy, or I think from Pat Harris. You have to be subject, they are still, as my understanding, subject to the same restraints. Whether they follow it or not, I don't know.
Okay, I understand.
But that's not my concern.
So the answer is yes, but they may not follow it?
I don't know. I don't know. Let's look at it this way. All I'm concerned, I'm concerned, Jim, is for this board. I don't care about other boards.
I understand, and that's some why I was, I see the way other boards act, and I assume that they're doing the right policy, and now I thought we were, but you explained it, I'm all set.
What they do is of no concern to me.
I got you.
It shouldn't be for you.
Point made.
I have a question about, like, says open meeting. Now, open meeting means that anybody from the public can attend. Is that?
And when you go as a board, as a quorum, it has to be a posted meeting. And you should be doing things like as a board.
No, no, I don't mean that. Does that mean, are you saying open meeting, that members of the public could walk with us or drive with us?
That you'll be subject to, once you get to the site, it's an open meeting, the public can watch you conduct your review. Now, there's the other option too. There are other options that are available to board members. If there's no vote of the board, or the board doesn't consider it critical for your decision-making process to be on the site, there's nothing stopping you from utilizing a public way or a way open for use as a public way to view the environs and look at the site. Again, let's come back anecdotally or third-hand to me that there might be board members who just visit the site. But remember, you don't have permission to enter. Even under the subdivision control law, we have a right of entry, but you still need the permission of the property owner. You just can't show it. That opportunity is there for you, if in fact you want to use it. If you don't, that's okay too. But remember, you can't enter the site without permission. So that's the way I think you should operate as a board. Go out and look at it as a board, make a decision as a board on projects you believe as a board are important enough to do. And we will certainly help you do that.
I really like it, what I like about it, the fact is, when we did other site reviews, we were gathering information at the same time. I like the fact that we're going to sit down and look at the plans first and really understand it, and then just go view it and come back. I think that makes a lot of sense. So it'd be more helpful for me with this format.
I just, clarification. As an example, say the Tavares site. We could not go on that without permission from the owner. The Crowell Road.
And remember, remember, this is important too. You're there as the special permitting authority. Whether it's that Mr. Kavosa's site, or another site, or a plan review, or a definitive plan, you're there to issue a permit. Remember, some time ago, we had that whole tutorial on rules and responsibilities? I didn't do it just for the fun. It's the foundations, the building blocks of what you do. When you go for these views, you're going as a permitting authority to issue a permit for someone to do something in the future. It is of no concern about what might have happened in the past as a subject of an enforcement action. This board has no enforcement role whatsoever. So remember, remember why you're there, is my point.
Right. I was just using that as example, as private property that we would not be allowed to go on.
That's correct.
Crowell Road that you could drive down.
You could drive down, it's open to the public. Now, if it said private way, keep out. It's private way, keep out. But if it's open, invitational rights are there, you can drive in, take a look around, you're good to go. But if you want to actually get out of the car and go onto private property, it's all different.
Well, I understand this is for a formal hearing where you advertise, do a lot of different things. If you have a site visit that's just information only with no discussion, would you still be limited to these sorts of things, except for the private property issue? Wants to keep the board from getting together, looking at a site, and just asking questions, without deliberation, without a hearing, without.
No, you can't.
This is a formal process.
This is keeping you safe. This is keeping you safe. You just can't decide to get together, drive to a site, and ask questions. Of who? Me, or yourselves?
You're not deliberating.
Paul, believe me, this is keeping you safe. But you can't, as a permit body, like a special permitting authority, decide to go down to a site and deliver it, even if it's two or three. That's just not keeping you safe. I mean, if you choose to do so, hey, I'm not, I'm not your babysitter. But, you know, you can do what you want, but my recommendations, board, you don't do that.
But if we have a hearing, and we submit the plans and you show us everything, we ask all the questions there, get all that stuff out of the way, just go view it and come back, that's what you're saying, so we're safe. You're safe. I like the idea of being able to look at the plan, talk about it, understand what you think about it, understand what you think about it publicly. Go to the site, just look at it, don't say anything, and come back. That covers all my needs to have the deliberation in the proper places.
Ralph?
Okay, I've got issues with this protocol. First of all, historically, we've not done this. I've been on the board for 12 years, we've been doing site visits. And I don't know what precipitated this, but I would like a copy of the memo from Mr. Duffy. I don't think I ever received that. And I would like to know what he said about this particular issue. I think Ken has a good point. If we have an open meeting, if we have a public meeting.
Nobody's going to give it to us.
Pardon?
I can see, as an applicant, if everybody in the public can show up at your property as an applicant.
Yeah, they're not going to give you.
You're not going to give you permission.
They're not going to give you permission to do it. So, you know, that's a big glitch right there. It says here that all board, all board members are expected to attend. What if we don't have a quorum, but some of the people still want to go? So why shouldn't we be able to go? Because we've got permission, if the applicant gives us permission at the meeting prior to when we plan to go, and we don't have a quorum, why should we, why shouldn't we be able to go anyway? I just, I just don't understand.
Let me try to explain it.
Go ahead.
The applicant, you don't, as special permitting authority, or a definitive plan, even a site plan review, you're still, property rights are involved. You don't have the right at all to go to a site and talk to the applicant or yourselves at all, period. And if you don't think I'm telling you the truth, you know, I'll ask Attorney Deputy to come here, or Pat to come here and explain it to you. But you don't have that right.
So we've been invited.
I have the floor, Ralph, please. Let me finish my explanation. What we might have done in the past is irrelevant. No good deed goes unpunished. So as a board member, we can first come on the board, and I try to teach you, this is what a plan does, this is what it looks like, it's all about. But again, it's not the role of the planning staff to explain these people's plans to you so you fully understand it. The purpose of a site visit is for you to familiarize yourself with the environs, not to ask the applicant questions, not to talk to the butters, not to converse amongst yourselves. If you want to do that, folks, you're on your own. I won't participate, sorry. That's just how I feel, and that's just the way it is going to be. If you want to go, my sense is, Mr. Tavares, Mr. Gary Tavares, has assented to it.
Has what?
He has assented to the board coming to his site.
Okay.
So the theory that I just heard from the board, that it will never happen, you're going to be there next week. So let's do this, let's see if it works. Before you condemn it and dismiss it out of hand and ask for proof from the attorneys, why don't we just try it? Because I'm going to try to make it work, and I think it will. But if you don't want to, let me know. But this is the protocol I think the board needs to utilize. I think it keeps you safe. I think it keeps the applicant safe. You can form decisions. What's bad?
Okay, well then, I will respond to your comment. You say that what's happened in the past has no relevance here. There's a thing called precedence. And it is relevant to a person who's been on the board as long as I have, that this is a major change. I'm a strong advocate of the fact that the site visits are an integral part of making good decisions for this board. I think it's very important that we have a protocol that will be agreeable to everybody here. It needs to be agreeable and compatible with what the staff feels and can do. And it has to be compatible with the applicant. And then, of course, it has to be compatible for this board. And I just, I have some reservations about it. I do think that if Mr. Duffy has been, has been, has given us a memo relevant to this, I think we're all entitled to see that memo.
Sure, no problem.
I think we definitely should see that. And you're saying in here that the minute-taking will be the duties of the board members that attend? I don't think that's a problem, but.
Because you won't be saying much.
Don't say anything. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The minutes should be. The minutes should be fairly easy, because...
Yeah, right. We attended this site, and these people, at this time, and these people were in attendance, and we viewed the property, and we adjourned. I mean, it's pretty simple. If, number three, you're saying that the plans and the files will be reviewed before proceeding to the sites. Now, if we've already seen the plans and reviewed them at the meeting before we go, why are we doing it again?
Just to refresh you, if there's anything new in the file, any changes, any deletions, any modifications, off we go. Could take 10 seconds, it could take 10 minutes, but you should look at the plan again. That's my recommendation. If you don't want to, that's okay, you don't have to.
So, the public meeting, wouldn't it then be standard, if this board agrees that we want to do site visits for all proposals, wouldn't it be standard then that the meeting would be posted before, you had the 48-hour thing, so you'd have to post it before the Tuesday thing, right? Before the Tuesday meeting?
I think the board needs to make a decision whether or not it's necessary first. We'll post a meeting on a Tuesday. You could have it on a Thursday, you could go Friday, we could post it on Wednesday. That's just a suggestion there, Ralph. But the board needs to deliberate and decide, yes, a view is appropriate in this instance, to go for every single plan review that you have. For PAL, I don't think it would be terribly necessary. Perhaps for a special permit for a contractor's yard, such as Mr. Tavares, yeah. But the board needs to discuss it as a board, and come to a decision as a board, that it's important for their, your decision-making. And then when you do, we'll set it up for you, and we'll make sure you follow this board's, and my understanding, of what this board needs to do, to go down there. Again, you do things as a board. You don't go down there as, you know, a couple group of you, and start chatting it up. But, you know, that's just what I think you should be doing. And what we might have done 12 years ago, or for me, 25 years ago, sometimes things change, and I think sometimes things change for the better. And I think this is a superior way of doing business. You'll have the property owner's permission, you'll be there as a group, as you should be. We won't be chasing folks down to waste of staff resources, go out two or three times. I think it's a superior way to go. And if I thought it weren't, I wouldn't recommend it to you. And I asked for Pat Harris's opinion, that the open meeting law needs to be complied with, and I'll get you a copy of her memo.
Yeah, I have two concerns. One is, if we do have this so-called "public hearing" in the field, we give out the opportunity of...
Can I introduce this? It's not a public hearing.
Well, you call it here a hearing slash meeting.
It'll be a meeting of the board to take a view. But you won't be taking testimony. You just, here is the site, let this over here, and out we go. So if I have in that rough draft, please understand, that's a draft we put together literally, you know, today. It'll be a meeting of the board, but to view the site. You won't be taking testimony. The purpose there is to help you gather your thoughts, what the site looks like in relation to the plans. That's it.
This does not take the place of a public hearing.
Correct.
It's an addition to...
It's an addition to...
Well, for meetings, you would not have television participation, you would not have a recording secretary there, not necessarily.
You're going out there, you're subject to the open meeting law. You're going out there to take a view, to help you understand the environs as they relate to this plan. That's all we're doing.
I think the other issue too, is if this is advertised, and there is a particular contentious issue, for example, like one of the ones we're dealing with today, you might be overwhelmed with people attending there, and it could become extremely unwieldy.
We'll coordinate that. Okay? Because the board can go in first. We'll find out next to it. But my sense is, it can be coordinated. Other jurisdictions and states do this. It's not rocket science. It's pretty, you show up, take a look around, it should take about 10 minutes, unless it's a huge site.
I think the site visit is very important to get a better understanding when we discuss this issue. This protocol makes it a lot more onerous, and it does not take the place of a public hearing. It may be a good thing, but I'm uncomfortable with the difficulty of trying to do this sort of thing, when you're just trying to collect information.
Again, individual board members shouldn't be calling the applicant or the owner, "May I come onto your property?" Go alone. Some people will do that, and you could be very easily disqualified from the decision. So I wouldn't recommend you do that, if I heard you right. Let's give this a try. And if it doesn't work, it's subject to modification. But my sense is, it's going to work just fine, and we'll have our first go at it for a special permit that you may issue for a contractor's yard. And remember, it's a permit hearing for future use of the property.
So I read it today when I was in, and I thought it made sense. Seems like a logical progression. We look at the presentation, go out and just have a view of the site. And if there's a large crowd of people, they'll probably be disappointed, because we're probably not going to be there very long.
We get in and get out fast. They go there to talk in front of us.
Right.
If we leave, they have nothing to say.
It's not going to be a forum for discussion. It's just going to be the look. We'll look and we'll leave. It'll be nice that we can, while the people are presenting the plan, we can get permission right then, make an appointment right then. Can we come out Thursday or Friday?
The question is, we can't quite understand the plans. We think it's important to go. I think you need to really be able to distinguish the complicated plans from the very uncomplicated plans.
And we can agree while they're presenting. If we've gathered enough information, do we want to have a look? We can all decide.
You need to decide as a board. You need a look.
I think it makes sense.
That's my suggestion.
When did this open meeting law come into effect?
Very recent.
Because I remember going to the seminars and all that, so having sat on other committees and things like that, sometimes I kind of get the willies when I see what happens in going to other committee meetings and boards. I think that it's put a lot of onerous things on the backs of boards and committees and things, and we just have to knuckle under it. And I realize that we can't do what we might have done in the past. And I think, I agree with Brian, that this is to protect us, and I think we have a protocol that we follow. I think it would be a good thing for us, and it can be adjusted, and I would support following this. My other question would be, so in a situation, maybe tonight, we have a discussion about the PAL building, we could say, okay, well, we've heard, we've seen the presentation, now, at this meeting, we would say, we would like to go and visit the site, then the meeting would be posted. So for Thursday, we would go and be here, and look at the plans, and then possibly go out to the site. So that's how it would work.
I think at the end of the discussion period, after we've heard our discussion, after we've heard the public discussion, I think there needs to be a final question asked of the board. Do you feel that this is, and not all the time, not like PAL, where we...
Yeah.
But do you feel this is complex enough that the board wishes to have a site visit? And we can take a, you know, not a "I move," we can just take a show of hands on it, I think. And if the majority of the board feels that they want to have a site visit, then I think we should do it. And I'm going to take this opportunity again, and I'm glad you raised the question. When did this open meeting law come into effect? Because I've been on the board for a good number of years, as you know, that these two more complex sites, I'm the only one who's currently on the board, who was there when those decisions were made. And I went out individually on both sites to do a site walk. It would have been far better had the board gone out together, so that we all saw the same thing at the same time. And I think that's what this accomplishes, so that somebody doesn't poke in that corner, and somebody else doesn't poke in that corner, to see what's going on. We all see the exact same thing that has to do with it. I also feel that this is absolutely on target, from my perspective, because if you see the site after you've had the presentation, you have questions that you want to go see for yourself before. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, lots of times. And so, I really want to see this. The staff has worked on this protocol to put everything in place, to make sure that they think it will work. Obviously, it can be modified if something isn't working, but it does protect us, and it allows us to see a site when we know what we're looking at.
It doesn't prevent us from seeing anything.
I like it, because it'll prevent the public from calling us out, and not doing our job, and not doing site visits, where we say we're following our policies and procedures, and we haven't even voted on it yet, instead of them demanding that, you know, we're not doing our job, that we can refer back to our policy, and by the way, we're going to decide later on tonight if it's necessary. I like that protection as well.
Ken?
I understand the protocol, and I understand why it's all there. Is there, the one thing that I don't like about the site view is the public having the right to go, and that. Is there any way that we, that can do, there is such thing as executive sessions, that we vote and the board goes out to view on an executive decision?
You can do that.
It makes no sense.
Well, Ken, I think you're going to find that not a whole lot of the public does show up.
But I don't care about that. I'm just saying, it doesn't make any sense. We're a board, we're the ones deciding. We're the ones that need the view. I don't see why everybody else has to go, has to have the right to go, if we just want to go see the site.
Because it's the open meeting law.
Open meeting law made it so.
Yeah. And I agree with you, Paul, that the open meeting law has put a lot of monkeys on the backs of people. Ralph?
Well, a couple of comments. Let's say, for instance, that there's a controversial proposal, and this room is full, and we hear the presentation, and then we vote as to whether or not we're going to do a site visit or not. And we vote to do a site visit. And someone says, "Is that open to the public?" And we say, "Yes." So you can't say, you can't equitably say, "There's not going to be a lot of people there." There might be a lot of people there, okay? So we need to be able to understand how we're going to deal with that, how we're going to deal with it if there's a large crowd there. So we need that to be right up front, we need to decide how that's going to happen.
Okay. Your role would be to, you want to view the site. You will leave those details to, again, you won't have to worry about the coordination. We will coordinate it for you. You won't have to make a decision as a board. You want to view the site, that's all we need to know. That's all I need to know. And we'll get you there. Okay?
Yeah, but how are you going to deal with the crowd? I think we need to know how that's going to happen, how that's going to be done.
Ralph, my sense is, you know, we'll work with the property owner, and we'll work with the people who want to be there. We'll let them know, you know, you can come on, you can look. If I need a police presence, I'll talk to the chief. There's lots of things I can do on your behalf, but don't think that you have to solve that problem, is what I'm saying. If you want to view the site, that's all we need to know, and off we go.
No, but there's 40 people out there. We don't know whether they're going to come or not. We don't know if there's going to be an issue or not.
Okay, well, let's put it this way. Let's not have a parade of horror here until we get, right now, we'll work with the property owner, if there's members of the public who want to come on the site. Here's where they can gather to watch you. Public, you can be over here, press, you can be right here. The board will come in and look. It's not like you get to wander all over the place. They get to watch you, just like they don't have the right to come up and wander around the table here, and look at the plans, and tap you on the shoulder. So, you know, here's an area over here for the public to watch you as you take your site visit, and off we go. So, like I said, there are other states and jurisdictions that do this. And I'll try to reemphasize that, you know, again, you can go to the site if you want, on your own, if you think it's important. But I'm saying, as a board, you work as a board, you want to view a site that's complicated enough, you approved this site plan tonight, I wasn't expecting a decision. So you, as a board, deliberate, decide, you'll be helpful. It's not always necessary, believe it or not. You're going to make a decision on another contractor's yard based on photographs, because this one individual decided that, you know, perhaps wasn't in their enlightened self-interests. But I think the board is making a, you're heading in the right direction. And what we might have done 25 years ago, well, we can't do today.
What we don't want to have happen is, the public is very knowledgeable about a lot of what we do. What we don't want to have is someone in the audience say, "Have you been to the site?" And we say, "Yes." And they come back and say, "Well, it wasn't posted, and I didn't get to go." We don't want to put ourselves in that position, and I think this will prevent that from happening.
And we'll go back to a little bit more on our public hearing protocols in the future too. Remember, it's not a given back and forth with members of the public, what you may or may have done. In this particular case we're talking about, you're not an enforcement agency. You have no enforcement role. So the question was actually out of order, if I've been tutored correctly as per exactly what happened. And it could be, the answer should be, at the appropriate time when the board decides. Standard answer.
I just have a procedural question, number one. It says that the site visit is scheduled Thursday, after the Tuesday meeting. I don't believe you have enough time to issue a public notice for a meeting on Thursday. And if you rely on the enterprise, it would have to be on the following Monday, before the next Tuesday meeting. There is one, so I don't think that Thursday was even meant to work.
You don't need to publish a hearing in the enterprise. All we need to do is post the meeting with the clerk.
You still need 48 hours. If the meeting goes late on Tuesday, you don't have 48 hours for meeting on Thursday.
Just like a town meeting sometimes, we post a meeting for you, and you didn't even know about it. We can anticipate it. If you don't go, we cancel the meeting. But the Thursday was just a suggestion. It could be the following Thursday, or Friday, or Monday, but whatever makes it work. But again, it's a procedure I think the board needs to follow.
Brian and Marlene are very likely to know what the complex sites are going to be, and they could, in fact, post it on Tuesday for Thursday.
Will we have to vote on it?
Yeah, that's okay. We can vote that we don't want to, and then the meeting's canceled.
Post it, and then vote may, yea, and eh, and then the meeting's...
Can I? I think we're getting caught up in the details here, guys.
Well, it's a procedural issue. It says on Thursday, so if you're going to follow this protocol, you have to address that issue.
Then, it's a draft, Paul. So it's a draft.
Well, as far as raising stuff...
Sure. It could be the following Thursday, it could be the following Mondays, whatever the board is comfortable with. Okay? Because again, as a scheduling, it might be that, okay, I won't be here when, what's a good day for the board members? And, okay, it might be next Wednesday. But just, again, it's a draft. You can decide when you want to head out, and we'll post it for you, and off we go. And we'll handle the protocol, and the, work with the property owner, and handle the protocol for you. And off you go as a board. Just like a juror, I gotta say something. You made this analogy before, you're just like a juror. Jurors go out and take a look at places, and you're going out there to take a look, and back you come.
Yes, sir.
May I make your suggestion, and Brian, that you say, they will be scheduled appropriately after the Tuesday meeting. Leave it open.
Sure.
So you don't pick, don't put the word "Thursday" in there. Just say "appropriately," or something like that.
It's something, you can vote it later on, but yeah, obviously, it's draft, and as appropriate, it's just fine.
Remember, it says "proposed protocol for site visits." It may be amended as time goes on.
So let me work on that for you a little bit, and off we go to our next exciting intervention.
Which is committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report that something should be given to the board?
Well, Community Preservation Committee has had its first round of hearings from the applicants. We have 13. We did five the first night. We'll do five again this coming Thursday, and five... We'll do five again this coming Thursday, and five, and three the following Thursday. So then we, uh, we will have their presentations, and then, um, we will be voting on recommending or not recommending them to town meeting.
Anybody else?
EDIC doesn't meet in the summertime, so we, we'll have another meeting until September.
So that's your report?
It's a report.
No report? Okay.
That's a good one.
There's, there's business going on, but it's not public yet, so...
Yeah, it's not formal. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, there is no general correspondence. The next meeting is July 29th, and remember, that is our joint meeting with the selectmen, and it will be for the hour, the first hour of our meeting. Are we meeting at 6:00, Brian, or no? We're doing our regular 6:30?
I'll find it. 6?
Yeah, because the hearing was continued to 6:00.
So we're meeting at 6:00 with the selectmen?
6 o'clock, okay.
The hearing is continued, I guess, for Mr. Tavares at that Tuesday, and, uh, off we go.
And please have Joyce send out a big, remember, 6 o'clock.
So Tuesday, the 29th, at 6:00.
And the agenda for that meeting as well?
It is being evolved right now. We're obviously going to be, Brian, have you got any further word on it?
Again, you, you met with the selectmen, and one of the things you handed out were your elements to the local comprehensive plan, which were the land use element and the coastal resiliency, uh, goals and policies, and we'd like to be able to discuss that with them that night for the, uh, endorsement for the town meeting, uh, is on the agenda. Together with, uh, the discussion of the housing element, although we didn't have a handout for them, we'd like them to be able to maybe have a placeholder for it. And I believe there is a, a request to have another joint meeting in September to review the consultant's report, RKG, uh, consultant's report for the housing demand state, uh, is on the agenda to discuss with the selectmen. And I was supposed to have met today with, with the town manager, but events intervened with the chairman of the board and the selectmen, so I'll meet with him tomorrow to, to finalize it.
Also, were you going to bring in the, um, Davis Straits, the commission staff?
Oh, yes. And then we have the revised scope of work back from the commission. They took out some of the issues with regards to transportation. We'd like the board to discuss that, vote that, they're already kind of working on it to move that process forward.
And I've asked Brian, and he said that, yes, the commission is working regardless of whether we take a joint vote or not.
They're doing some traffic counts and...
Are they working on the scope of work? Are they working on the project?
Working on the project, because as you know, they gather background information first, and then come up with the ideas, so that's what they're doing.
A little traffic council, isn't it?
I just, I hope that, uh, we will vote on this protocol the next meeting. I think it's, I think it's necessary for us to, to have this in place so that we can start the site visits. So it would be my recommendation, it'd be on the agenda.
I would think we could vote it right now and make an appointment for, uh, visiting that Tavares property.
I don't have any problem with that. Let's get going.
So all in favor of the protocol? We need to have a motion, sorry about that, but...
We have to stretch it after.
We have kind of a show of hand, but, so a motion would be in place then. I mean, we're kind of going back on the agenda, but since you brought it up, Ralph, and we probably should do that, get that site visit scheduled.
Off, let me clean, you're going back on your agenda, so why don't I clean it up for you? I'll have it, I'll have it ready for you Tuesday.
Okay.
You wanted some language changes, that's appropriate.
And there's no hurry to get the Tavares site visit scheduled then?
I, I'll discuss that with Laura Moynihan tomorrow.
Okay. If there is a...
My sense is the board wants to, but there's no vote, but I'll, I'll, I'll be doing this background.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it next Tuesday then, okay?
All right. So you have the next meeting already, and understood what's going on there, and the agenda will be sent out to everybody, so we do have a full understanding of what's going on. And most likely, we'll have the background information sent out to, uh, to the elements. And rest assured that the three of us are working on the goal and policies for the housing element. We're looking for the housing report to inform us better as to what we might, um, be putting in there, perhaps to modify what we're coming up with. So I need a...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move to second, and all in favor?
All right.